What kind of sound do you got there? Turkey? Ham?
We have. Well, it's gotten very quiet, so it must be time to start. With that, we'll go ahead and call the Johnston City Council meeting number twenty-four dash zero-one to order. Sam, roll call, please.
Martin.
Here.
Burkhardt.
Here.
Cope.
Here.
Ready? Evans.
Here.
I want to welcome everyone that is in the audience this evening. If you're here for an item that is on the agenda, we would ask for you to wait for that item to come up and to address the council at that time. If you're here for an item that is not on the agenda, there will be an opportunity under public communications to address the council. The next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. And I see our Representative Eddie Andrews in the audience this evening. So Eddie, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the Agenda Approval. Mike, do we have any changes to the agenda?
Mayor, there is one correction on the agenda, item five F. It should have been Resolution twenty-two four dash zero-two, not twenty-three three oh-nine. So that needs to be corrected. Otherwise, there's no other changes on the agenda.
Counsel, any other changes? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second discussion? Sam, vote, please.
Martin.
Yes.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Cope.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to public communications, we have two scheduled public communications this evening. And the first is a proclamation to officially declare January twenty-two four as slavery and human trafficking prevention month in Johnston. And I have a proclamation, but I'm not sure, do we have somebody here to receive it? Steve, why don't you come forward? Proclamation for slavery and human trafficking prevention month. Whereas the United States was founded upon the principle that all people are created with the inalienable right to freedom and added the thirteenth amendment to the Constitution, making slavery slavery illegal. And whereas slavery within the United States today is the most often found in the form of forced labor and sex trafficking, which weakens our social fabric, increases violence and organized crime, and debases our humanity. And whereas this heinous crime is found within our own community. And whereas the Rotary Club of Johnston is working to abolish all forms of human trafficking through education, prevention, volunteerism, advocacy, and collaboration. And whereas even though awareness of this crime is growing, human trafficking continues to go unreported due to its isolating nature, the misunderstanding of its definition, and the lack of awareness about its indicators. And whereas increased community education on how to identify victims of human trafficking, along with increased knowledge of local resources and services for those affected by these criminal actions, can help restore freedom and dignity to identified survivors, as well as to help diminish the number of future victims. And whereas every business, community organization, faith community, family, and individual can make a difference by choosing products that are not made by forced labor, by working to protect our young people from sexual exploitation, by addressing the problem of internet, sex trafficking, and pornography, and by becoming more aware of the problem and possible solutions. And now therefore, I, Paula Dernfeld, Mayor of the City of Johnston, Iowa, who hereby proclaim the month of January twenty-two four as slavery and human trafficking prevention month, and encourage all our citizens to become more informed on this growing problem, to be vigilant and report suspicious activity, and to work towards solutions to end trafficking in all its forms in our community. If you see something that doesn't look right, take action and call the National Human Trafficking Hotline at eight-eight-eight-three-three-seven-eight-eight-eight. For more information and resources about trafficking in Iowa, go to the Network Against Human Trafficking and Slavery website at www.iowanaht.org. You bet. And in fact, I did go out to that website today, and there's a lot of great information on that website. So why don't you tell us a little bit more about this initiative?
Thank you for the time this evening and making an agenda and an item and part of this month. Amy, next to me here, was really the inspiration, and I'm going to turn it over to her for just a few comments.
Thank you very much for making this proclamation. It's very, very important to all the children in the United States. Every four seconds, there's someone bought and sold for sex or labor in the United States. In Iowa, there's over twenty-five thousand students every single day who are bought and sold for labor trafficking or exposed, there's over a hundred thousand exposed to human traffickers online. So this is very, very important. The only way we can solve this problem is by prevention and awareness. That's why the Rotary is working very hard to do that, both internationally, nationally, locally.
And Amy is with the Ankeny Rotary Club, but she's been inspirational and really got a lot of the clubs in the metro to get this proclamation passed this month. We appreciate your legislative efforts for the city of Johnston and keeping massage parlors out of the city, not part of our zoning. And more locally, the rest of the folks that we see up here are members of the Rotary. You pointed out Eddie Andrews before, I think it was last year, right before Green Days, Eddie was down on the border between the United States and Mexico, actually witnessing human trafficking and trying to look into that problem, and he's been working with legislators. He is a Johnston Rotarian. Wayne Johnson, next to Eddie, is also a Johnston Rotarian, and he's again part of our metro-wide initiative where we're working to build awareness and then minimize the human trafficking. Not here this evening is Tyler Tompkins, former Johnston Police Officer, also Johnston Rotarian. And through a club that he's working with, last year in twenty-two-three, he actually purchased the freedom of one thousand people in Pakistan. For three hundred dollars, you can buy a person's freedom, and so we've helped raise money for that. So we're, I guess the point is, we're working nationally, internationally, and then also within our city. So really appreciate you taking the time to build awareness.
Thank you, all of you, for what you're doing. I mean, this is, this is an important issue. And, you know, and I don't know that everybody is aware of what's going on out there, you know, whether it's with, you know, women who are brought over from other countries like we were experiencing with the massage parlors, or just our children, you know, that are on the streets and homeless and taken advantage of. And so, you know, we do need to make people more aware of it, and we need to, need to become more creative on how we find some solutions. And certainly, this is one step in the right direction. I'm so glad that you mentioned the ordinance that we passed some years ago now. You know, we were having problems with massage parlors on Merle Hay Road, and we knew what was going on at those massage parlors. I mean, the women that were working there couldn't speak English. So we knew, we knew where they were coming from, and we knew, you know, how they were getting here. The problem was, we couldn't, it just, the process just wasn't working with us, with us to try and shut them down. So we passed that ordinance, and the chief can speak about this more eloquently than I can, but we passed the ordinance that requires any massage therapy businesses coming into our community to be licensed. And we do background checks, and we make sure that they are legitimate operations before they locate here. And again, it's, it's not that we, you know, that we, you know, are trying to target those, that legitimate businesses, because, I mean, it's, it's a, you know, it's an honorable profession. But we want to keep out the ones that are, you know, that are not, that are not legitimate businesses and taking advantage of women and so. But, you know, it goes beyond women. It's, it's, it's children, you know, it's, it, you know, it just, too, too, too many of our people of all, all ages, all races, all cultures are being taken advantage of. And we just, we need to do all of our parts to, to see if we can't bring an end to it. So anyway, thanks again. Thanks again for, for being here this evening. And I will sign, I will sign this proclamation, and I don't, yep, Jen is back there. We'll take a quick picture. What now? I'm not a fan, so I usually move them on, I'm sorry to say. Well, it is a Northwest Iowa thing, yeah. I usually give them to the mayor. The bings. Helps if I put my glasses. We have one other public communication this evening, and that is presentation of the Merle Hay Road Johnson sign that will be installed along one-eighty thirty-five. And again, Matt, can you, can you join me up here? You can, you can help tell the story. So I think Matt is probably as excited about this as I am, right?
Of course you are.
That's right, that's right. We've been working for probably about ten years to put Johnston on the map. You know, people would drive down the interstate, whether you're traveling east or west, they'd drive, drive right over basically our, the entrance into our community, and they had no idea, if you just looked north, that is Johnston, Iowa. In fact, to add injury to insult, if you're driving over the bridge and you do look north, you'll see a little Urbandale sign on our side of the bridge. So anyway, Matt and I have been working for a number of years with the Department of, Iowa Department of Transportation to see if we couldn't get some signs along the interstate. We did get our first one on Eighty-sixth Street about six months ago. Okay, a year ago. But now we're going to have four more, two as you're driving from the, from the east going west, and two as you're coming from the west going east. And we also have some others in the queue. But now, as people drive down the interstate, they're going to know that Johnston exists. This is where Johnston is, and if you want to visit the best city in the state, you know, get off the interstate and, and come into Johnston. I just want to, you know, I want to thank some, some people for making this possible because it, it, it was a, a, a long road, excuse the pun, to get here. But what happened was, when, when Matt and I started talking to the Department of Transportation, they told us that there wasn't any more room to put, put a sign up for Johnston. And so we continued to have those conversations, we were persistent about it. And finally, what they told us is, you know, if you go and talk to the people whose names are on the signs now, and if you can work something out with them, we'll put, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll make the trade, we'll put Johnston on the signs. So after having conversations with the VA Hospital, the Army Corps of Engineers, because Cedarville Lake was on, on some of the signs, with the Gold Star Military, Gold Star Military Museum, we were able to work out, we were able to negotiate spots on the signs, and that's what's made it possible for us to have the two signs on, on the east side and the two signs on the west side. So I want to thank Scott Marler, the Director of the Department of Transportation, because I, you know, he was the one that really, he was pretty instrumental in helping us get this accomplished, as well as Dave Lorenzen at the Iowa Department of Transportation. He's the one that worked directly with us as we were negotiating with the other parties to get the, to get the signs done and, and made. So anyway, with that, we do have a replica of what the sign is going to look like, and later this week, I'm told, the signs will actually be installed. So we need to have, we need to memorialize this evening, and I would invite all of the council members to come down and have their picture taken with, with the.
One of the actual signs?
No, this is, this is a replica.
Interesting thing is about these signs, the owners put two destinations on the signs. First, we can say, that looks like what we learned, that we have to work out.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of federal regulations on how to hold on. You learned that?
Yes.
You know, and I didn't understand till I was, and they showed us what the sign was going to look like. Highway twenty-eight is actually Merle Hay Road going south, but not north in Johnston.
Correct. We know that very well, right?
Was it?
We know that very well.
Yes, we did, no team of funding for us. But the most important thing on the sign. Thank you, Matt, for all of your hard work on that.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to public hearings. We have two public hearings this evening. The first is to conduct a public hearing on the authorization of a loan and dispersment agreement and the issuance of notes to evidence the obligation of the city there under, and approval of Resolution number twenty-four dash zero-three, instituting proceedings to take additional action for the authorization of a loan and dispersment agreement and the issuance of not to exceed five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar sewer revenue capital loan notes. And we'll open this public hearing at seven eighteen.
Good evening. Tonight's public hearing is a step in the process to authorize the city to enter to agreement with the Iowa Finance Authority for a loan to not exceed the amount of five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. This will be for the, to finance the planning and design of Little Beaver Creek Sanitary Sewer Extension Segment B. Just trying to bring up. We need to, okay, thank you. We'll bring up a map here in just a second, but Segment B is in the city's capital improvement plan. Segment B will extend the sanitary sewer trunk main to serve the area that was annexed by the city back in twenty-eighteen. The project will extend sewer from Towner Drive to Highway four fifteen. There is one correction that I would like to make in the staff report. It did say that it would be entirely a gravity main. It, however, is actually be constructed of both a gravity main, a lift station, and then force main. We do have to cross Beaver Creek north of Towner Drive. With that, it will be an interest-free loan that will be rolled into the project's construction cost once we do bid the project out. Be happy to answer any questions.
Does the council have any questions for Matt?
Mayor, I'm full of questions tonight.
Okay, well, take it away.
Full of something. But the dual-force segment that you just commented on, is that above ground then? Another, it also is under Beaver Creek?
Yeah, so on the map, the dashed line will be the dual-force main that we go under Beaver Creek with, and the dual-force main will be actively using one, and the other one will be, in case that our, our original main ruptures or we have issues with that, we'll be able to switch over. So it's really bending, putting redundancy into that system so that you don't have to go back in there and repair one of those mains if one does go down. We're going to put both of them in to start with.
Okay.
And the lift station is the dot that is just north of Row Drive at the corner of Row and Northwest Hundred and Tenth, and then we'll have Gravity Main that runs north along the east side of Northwest Hundred and Tenth Court, up to four fifteen to serve development north of there, as well as east of there.
Is that dashed line required to be cased or anything along those lines?
Yeah.
Okay.
Other questions for Matt?
I guess, I'm sorry. Segment C, has that already been funded and in construction, or where are we?
Segment C is designed, we'll be bringing that to bid or letting it out to bid here over the next month.
Okay, so that's going to be quickly.
Other questions, counsel? This is a public hearing on this item. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council? If not, we will close the public hearing at seven twenty-two. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution number twenty-four dash zero-three?
No move.
Second. We have a motion, a second, discussion? Sam, vote, please.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Cope.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Motion passed. Item four B, conduct a public hearing for the proposed twenty-two-four, twenty-five capital improvement budget and the proposed capital improvement plan twenty-two-four, twenty-five through twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and Resolution number twenty-four dash eleven.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel.
Oops. We'll open this public hearing at seven twenty-three.
Okay. Tonight, we have a public hearing on the capital improvement plan for the five years over fiscal twenty-four, twenty-five through fiscal twenty-eight, twenty-nine. In your packet, there is our book with the five-year plan in our new software. There is a link to that in the packet as well, so I pulled up what our book looks like in the new ClearGov software, but our priorities in the capital improvement plan are to fund projects costing at least ten thousand with a life expectancy of at least fifteen years, and equipment having a cost of two-hundred thousand and life expectancies of at least ten years. The fiscal twenty-five through twenty-nine CIP includes project and equipment with a total estimated cost of one-hundred-and-nineteen-million-seven-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars. In this plan, we have, we can break it down to our one, our fiscal twenty-five-only plan, which is including capital requests of twenty-four-million-nine-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand dollars, which this, if you have questions on specific ones, we can click into our individual requests and see further details, as well as over the multi-year plan. In fiscal twenty-five, this plan requires issuance of debt for potential projects, which would be supported by tax levies, stormwater, utility fees, TIF revenue, water and sewer revenue. Additional state revolving loan funds will also be sought. Depending on the time of the scheduled projects, we will have planned issuance of debt to occur in May twenty-two-four. All of these capital projects will require additional council consideration. If there's questions on specific projects, department directors can answer those questions. And then there's also on here, sorry, there's a summary by the funding source as well of revolving loans versus geo-debt and TIF debt.
Also, any questions for Sarah? Councilman Burkhardt, nothing?
Nothing. I found a spelling mistake, but I'm just going to send that on, so.
I guess I have a, I just want a clarification. These are itemized requests, they're still going to come back to the city, city. Like, there was a request on here for artwork at the corner of Sixty-second and Merle Hay Road. I mean, there has been no discussion of an artist, budget, the Art Council hasn't met for a year or more. So I would say this is a guideline of, perhaps we could almost call it the maximum number of projects for that year. It's like a sketch of how it will cover through the five years, but things can still shift. Correct? Okay, thanks. Other questions for Sarah? If not, this is a public hearing on this item. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing at seven twenty-seven. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution number twenty-four dash eleven? No moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, discussion? Sam, vote, please.
Cope.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, discussion? Sam, vote, please.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Cope.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the non-consent agenda, item seven A, consider approval of ordinance number one-one-one-zero, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordnances of the City of Johnston, Iowa, two thousand and seven, by amending section one-zero-six-point-one-two for the purpose of adopting solid waste collection fees within the city code.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. The City of Johnston does partner with Metro Waste Authority for organized collection of our solid waste and recycling material from all single-family and two-family homes in Johnston. We also provide Townhome Association the same option if they opt into that program. In early of twenty-two-three, the city did receive notice for rate increases effective July one of twenty-two-three from Metro Waste Authority. These were reflected on the utility bills issued to residents, but due to an oversight, these were not formally approved and presented to city council or adopted by ordinance. So the changes, the solid waste fee adjustments effective July one of twenty-two-three, did increase the solid waste fees. solid waste fees by 4%. These rate adjustments were really influenced by various factors, including CPI, diesel costs, landfill disposal fees, and other fees. Notably, the contract with our waste hauler does have a 4% cap included in that, so that did mitigate a higher rate increase. These fees do cover both the weekly solid waste collection and then the annual spring cleanup event that we hold in conjunction with Metro Waste. For the curbet recycling fee, that did increase also on July 1 by 5%. So the rate went from 432 to 424, so a 22-cent increase per household per month. Again, this was influenced by increases to CPI, the increase in compressed natural gas index, and other contract requirements that Metro Waste Authority has with waste management. This increase is necessary to cover the costs associated with the collection of the recycling material itself. Unless there's any questions, staff would recommend approval of the ordinance that sets the rates increase retroactive July 1 to 2023. And these rates would reflect what the residents are already being billed for the services by the City of Johnston. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions council may have this evening.
Councils have any questions? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve ordinance Number 1110?
No moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Sam vote, please.
Martin.
Yes.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Kope.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Motion passed. Does it require three readings? Would it be appropriate to waive second and third reading?
You could.
My preference would be to do a second reading and then waive the third reading unless there's a strong feeling we shouldn't do it. I always like to do two readings.
Not because of the retroactive nature of this, that there might be some interest in doing that, but that's, we can...
I'm good with scratching the next two. I'm just hearing it tonight.
You can make the motion then.
Yeah, how do I make the motion? Yeah, I'd...
You, you've moved to...
Make a motion to move forward and...
Waive second and third reading.
Waive second and third reading on this ordinance. And adopt and publish. Yeah.
There a second?
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. Sam vote, please.
Can, mayor, I do have some clarification. Because of the nature of this, what, how many votes do we need to pass?
It would require unanimous to waive this second and third reading and adopt.
Well, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments?
You know, I, I will support it. I, I really don't like waiving second and third reading on a fee increase. So I'll, I'll support it because it requires unanimous vote, but I really...
And this one's unique.
Yeah, and so to me, being a fee increase, I, I, I will support it because there seems to be interest in doing it, but I'm sure it's the best practice.
Just for clarification of the record, this fee increase went in a year ago?
It went into effect July 1 of 2023, so about six months ago.
I just, I just think from a, from a, from a, giving folks an opportunity to really participate in the process, I, and, and it's, there is no real benefit of having this go fully impacted, be fully impacted by the council tonight or two weeks from tonight. And it's still going to have the same impact. That being said, if there's, if there's, if the other three members of the council support it, I will support it as well.
Any further comments? Sam vote, please.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Kope.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to item 7B, receive and consider bids and bid protests from Graphite. Bids, the bids would be for the Crown Point remodel project, and the bid protest from Graphite Construction Group related to the Crown Point Community Center addition and renovation project. John.
Good evening, mayor and council. On Thursday, December 7, the City of Johnston held a bid opening for the Crown Point remodel and addition. That afternoon, we received a total of nine bids. Upon full review of the bids, four of these did not fully complete the entire bid form. Additionally, one bidder did not complete the bidder status form. All five of these bidders were ruled unresponsive due to the, to not fully completing the bid forms. The bid tab is attached here and is listed above. Based on that, Monroe Construction Company would have been the low bidder, would be the low bidder on this project. As indicated, we did receive a protest letter from Graphite Construction, and you have received that, and you can take consideration of that. Any questions? The next item's also about this, so.
Any questions for John? Seeing none, do we have a motion to receive and consider the bids and the bid protest from Graphite Construction Group?
No moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Sam vote, please.
Kope.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7C, consider Resolution Number 23-336 and Resolution Number 24-01, making award of construction contract and approving construction contract and bond for the Crown Point Community Center addition and construction project. John.
Thank you. As indicated before, Monroe Construction Company was the low bid. Their bid of $4,649,500 was approximately 14% under the cost opinion from RDG. Just so you know, the six bid alternates that you would be accepting tonight, other than just the base bid, are the concrete patio and knee wall area just outside of the, of the classroom space as you go towards the lake, solar array for the rooftop, casework for the quilting and sewing room to allow for better storage, upper cabinets on the north kitchen area, and island casework for the community room to allow for serving, and then pro-protective, bird-friendly glass protection as well. So all of those items would have been, or would be included in this total bid package. And as indicated before, this still remains about 14% under the cost opinion from RDG. So we do have the architect in the audience, if there's any direct questions for them as well. Otherwise, I will answer any questions you may have.
Council, have any questions for John? Not a question but a statement. I am very excited about this addition. I am also really excited that we're going to have a solar array and the bird-friendly glass. Appreciate that.
Did everything we could to work those things into, into the project, so.
I'm really glad to see it. Other questions or comments?
And just a point of clarification, your honor. If the council does proceed with the staff recommendation and make the award to Monroe Construction, that would essentially mean that the bid protest is denied. So that would be the result. Alternatively, the council could decide to reject the bids and rebid the project if you were persuaded by the bid protest. But those are essentially your two options this evening.
I failed to mention when we were discussing item 7B that we did receive that bid protest that would be part of the record.
Correct. There was an initial letter from Graphite and then an additional letter that was received this afternoon that was distributed to the council.
Any other comments, questions for John? If not, do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 23-336?
No moved.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. Sam vote, please.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Kope.
Yes.
Motion passed. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 24-01?
No moved.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion. Sam vote, please.
Martin.
Yes.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Kope.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Item 7D, consider adopting by motion the draft R. Johnston Team in Action Framework for Effectiveness and draft vision and mission from the draft strategic plan 2024 through 2029 through 2030.
Yeah. Thank you, mayor and council. As the council and staff is aware, the city has engaged the services of Lyle Summit from Lyle Summit and Associates to develop a new strategic plan for the City of Johnston. This process started in December and will be completed later this spring. Now, the first part of this project kicked off starting the week of December 4. Where Lyle met with council members, the mayor, and key department heads in individual Zoom sessions to really familiarize themselves with the City of Johnston and some of our goals and objectives that we were working on, and really to try to understand our future vision and kind of preferred outcomes, and then overall the mission for the city. On December 12, he then facilitated, facilitated a half-day session with department heads to collaborate and get input from them as a group. This session developed the vision and mission for the city to really begin constructing a plan for our 2024-2029 focusing on the strategic framework elements like our Vision 2039 and our plan for 2029, and kind of how are we going to execute those over the next few years. Then on December 18 and 19, he then led a half, a day and a half session with the overall mayor, council, and leadership on governance, and then both at the local level, and then further divining the vision and mission for the City of Johnston. Since that session, he has prepared an initial report that was included in the packet that really provides that leadership and governance guide, but additionally, it also provides draft vision and draft mission for the City of Johnston. Now, these are really draft format at this point, and they are very much subject to change when the process, phase two of the process starts this spring. Looking ahead, there will be a second part of this project that will begin this spring that really will be structured on gathering input and really working on the strategic plan itself and kind of the elements that will, the work plan for us, and then what are those challenges and how do we then navigate through those challenges for success? So I'm going to walk through very quickly just a few elements. First, the Johnston Vision 2039. And that statement says, "Johnston 2039 is a safe community and attractive community with a small-town feeling. Johnston 2039 has great neighborhoods, outstanding quality of life amenities for all to enjoy, and the thriving community destination and strong local economy. In Johnston 39, our residents and businesses take pride in Johnston. Johnston 2039, a special place thrive every day." And I would take one note, you will see these little numbers throughout. Those correspond to principles then, and each one of those principles, for example, safe community, principle one, then ties into a number of means. And I'm not going to go through all of those means this evening because we'd be here for a while, but I do encourage you to review that. Staff has, has done a light edit on those, but certainly as we work through the, the draft this spring, you know, there's pretty much, they are very much subject in change. But there is a lot more behind just a vision statement, but there is a lot of principles. And then how are we going to achieve those principles behind them? Any questions on the vision? Moving on, the City of Johnston mission then. The Johnston City government mission is to provide exceptional city services and to plan and invest in our community's future in a financially responsible and sound manner through a high-performing city team that provides personalized customer service and engages our community. And again, just like the vision, there are key principles behind all of the words within the mission itself, and then there are those means and how are we going to achieve each of those. So is there any questions on the mission itself? So with that, tonight, what I'm really asking for is for the council to simply accept the draft of the, the R. Johnston Team in Action Framework and Effectiveness and the draft vision and mission statements from the draft strategic plan 2024-2029-2039. By accepting that from a staff perspective, we will begin to implement all the items that come before council and, and communication. You know, we will tie it back to this vision and mission so that we can begin to start working this in our daily actions. Certainly, that also gives us the opportunity, if we see issues or concerns as leading up to the sessions that we plan to have in May, that then we can then retool and kind of pivot if we need to. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions council has.
Council, have any questions for Mike? Mike, there was a worksheet that was sent to us a week ago, week and a half ago. I did not get around to doing anything with that. I, the deadline passed or still can add to it or?
Very much, we want to get them back. So I know there's a few good people that have not submitted them yet, so...
You're not alone.
So we do ask that you...
The holiday kind of interfered with some of the responses.
Yeah, so, you know, please take the opportunity to complete that and, and return it. You know, Lyle himself's on vacation, so I think you all get a little bit of a bye.
Other questions or comments?
Mayor, I'm ready to make a motion to receive the draft mission statement and vision statement based on the strategic planning surveys and input that's been provided thus far.
Second. Have a sec, a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mike, I commend all the work that's been done so far. I'm excited about what these statements and these slides mean. Obviously, because of the holiday, because of the sub-principles that kind of back them up, I think it is important for our staff to become familiar with them in principle. I think that as we continue through this process, especially into May, there may be a little bit of smithing that we need to continue to do in that regard. So that's why simply it's a receiving at this point in time of that. But I look forward to continuing to have wonderful discussions with my fellow council members so that we can formally adopt these in the future.
Perfect, thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Sam vote, please.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Kope.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7E, consider approval of claims in the amount of $794,587.19. Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. Sam vote, please.
Kope.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Motion passed. We've already had the city administrator's staff comments as well as the city council comments. Do we have anything else for the good of the order? If not, we are adjourned. We haven't done this for a while.